Regular council meeting, July 3, 2013, will now be called to order. And I, as the city clerk, please do the roll call.
Mr. Michael?
Yes, here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Palumbo?
Here.
Mr. Gehring?
Here.
Mayor Pike?
Here. Let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have the actual comments on the agenda items, Sherry, do you have something you'd like to say?
Um, yes.
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Sherry Casseman. I live on 69 Downer Avenue. And I basically wanted to bring to the attention to the counsel of a recent letter that we submitted to the mayor's office concerning a property on 60 Johnson Avenue that meets all the criteria for condemnation. It's a health and safety issue vermin or inhabiting it. The foliage is out into the alley. Windows are broken. It's been vacant well over five years. And it's definitely a fire hazard to the properties that are right next to it.
What number is that?
That's 60 Johnson Avenue.
The vacuum.
The property owner was Helen Queer and I believe she passed a couple of years ago. And her daughter, who does not live in the area, is currently paying the taxes on it. But it has, you know, as far as ordinance or being taken care of, it's awful. It's definitely bringing down the property value for the residents around it as well.
Well, definitely the code officer should be on that. And I think that...
We're already on.
You are?
He's here. Mr. Head Officer, he can try to tell you what his name is here.
Okay, who's that?
I'm there.
Yeah, would you like to tell us what's... Who owns that?
I'm Scott Chapel, Code Enforcement. When I looked at 60 Johnson Avenue, did some research, found Helen Queer, Queer's daughter, sister, whatever, found like an early trove right there.
Okay.
Sent a letter out. The standard letter, this and that. This is against, you know, International Property Maintenance, blah, blah, blah. You had so many days to crush this. Or we'll get a plan B.
Okay. So, they're following?
It is in process. The ball is rolling if the ball stops. You know, we'll plan B and roll it another way. I wish I could fix the things I see by tomorrow or by Monday, but it takes time.
Okay, so as far as how long of a timeline do you give them until they...
I give them five days from receipt of the letter. We send out certified letters. If X amount of time goes by, I don't get, you know, I don't get notification that the certified letter was received. Then I have to try by phone calls or however I can.
Okay. All right, then I would contact you to find out what progress is being made. All right, thank you.
Have you talked to any owners or...
I have talked to the owner before. The daughter, I called her. And, you know, I even showed an interest in purchasing the property. And they acted like they were interested at one point, but then they never, you know, came through with anything.
Also, we'll have to do some nice ones up there.
Sure.
Or when?
Yeah, hopefully we can get something resolved from that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casseman.
Is there any comments on any of the agenda items? No? All right, I ask the city clerk. Can she read the resolutions, please?
Resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, where it's appropriate that a vote should be set for each year for the direction of our thoughts and initiatives for our health and wellbeing. Whereas, it is important to create excitement about health and fitness within our community and inspire our citizens with fun and creative ways to stay healthy. Whereas, the pressing complex health needs of children, adults, and families is fundamental to the wellbeing of the citizens of Uniontown. Whereas, opportunities for fitness and health awareness and practice are needed and wanted by the members of the Uniontown community. Whereas, special occasions for health and fitness activities may be recognized and provided to foster recreation and rebirth of the human soul of Uniontown. Whereas, the importance of understanding nutrition and practicing good eating habits is essential to the wellbeing of our community. Whereas, the City of Uniontown's community outreach, clubs, and organization can and are encouraged to partner for the unique approach to serve and effectively care for the physical and mental health needs of children, adults, and families in our community. Whereas, the use of dance and other artistic expression can be used for both physical and mental health in line with the Uniontown Arts Fellowship Phoenix Arts Center's mission to restore hope, healing, and life to our city and greater county through the arts. Whereas, the City of Uniontown recognizes the annual Dance for Dreams Festival and Art and Soul 5K events facilitated by the Uniontown Arts Fellowship Phoenix Arts Center as the inspiration and future annual highlight of July as Health and Fitness Month. Now therefore, Edward Archibald, Mayor of the great city of Uniontown, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2013 and every July thereafter to be Uniontown's P A Health and Fitness Month and urge our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting the demands of health and fitness needs to unite on the days of each July in the observance of such exercise, community activities, nutrition, and community involvement, and to create positivity and excitement for healthy living for community outreach and creative, enjoyable activities to point the people of Uniontown with the fundamental necessity of a yearly recognition month for this important cause.
I think we need resolutions, please, first.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Think it's a good thing?
Absolutely.
Mr. Gehring?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the corner of the treasure for the month of June 2013 be in the same as like accepted and filed.
Mr. Michael?
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
Uh, I still don't see any changes or notations made from the improper treasures reports, so I'll be voting no again.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
No.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hereby accept the minutes of June 5, 2013 regular council meeting.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, Council hereby direct the Director of the Council of Budget to make payment of the following invoices for services for regular products for chores in the City of Uniontown for June 2013 invoices in the general fund, which includes a transfer to Off Street for $10,918.57. Recreation, $2,490.54. Highway, $25,710. Recycling, $531.10. Sewer fund, $309,793.91. Off Street, $11,528.43. And community development, $113.63.
Mr. Michael?
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
No comment.
Mayor, I would like to point out that a portion of the general fund expenses, $370,000, included in that which was on last day.
The last payment on part, you're out, Joe.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to reappoint James Sampson to the City of Uniontown Zoning Hearing Board effective July 1, 2012, our term of five years expire in June 30, 2017.
Mr. Michael?
Mr. Sampson is a great community member, all-around good guy, and he's been on board and heckled jobs. I'm glad to remember to appoint him.
Mr. Palumbo?
I agree with that.
Jones?
No comment.
Palumbo?
I agree with Mr. Michael, sir.
Mr. Gehring?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to appoint DeJohn to the City of Uniontown Zoning Hearing Board to fill the expired term of Peter Walk effective July 1, 2013, for a term of five years expiring June 30, 2018.
Mr. Michael?
This is John, I was on the county redevelopment together. She's a valuable business member in the community and a very good citizen, but I just wanted to say we are on the board together. She'll be another good addition to the zone. That's not a call for this.
I know her very well. She's a very, like you said, a good person and qualified. One of the best we could pick. Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
I would also like to thank Mr. Hook for his service that he's given the city in the past. He's done a fine job. And I think Ms. John will also be a good board member.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to appoint Ron Meepres as the zoning alternate to the City of Uniontown Zoning Hearing Board, a term of three years effective July 1, 2013, and expire in June 30, 2016.
Mr. Michael?
Mr. Meepres is another good citizen and good community member, and I think he'd be a good member to the board.
Mr. Jones, no comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
No comment on Mr. Meepres. I do have a question for the solicitor, though. I don't think it's a conflict of interest. If somebody would be on the county board and then be on the city board, that wouldn't be a conflict, would it?
No, not unless they were...
She's on county redevelopment, not on the other.
That's an appointed position, so she wouldn't count as an officer, so it wouldn't conflict.
Right, right.
I'd like to thank the council, too, for reaching across the line, the party line. If... I believe both these people are Republicans.
They are.
And I'm proud of both of them.
I'm going to take my book back.
So, just to show you that we're about doing the right thing, no matter what party you're in.
Mr. Michael?
Is this on Mr. Meepres?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
Mayor, before we continue, I forgot to announce the executive session. We have to announce that, given that we're enjoying the regular session, that today, an executive session of council was held at 4:00 p.m. for personnel matters, with mayor and all members of council present. May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to appoint Sam Denny as the voting alternate to the City of Uniontown Zoning Hearing Board, a term of three years effective July 1, 2012, and expire June 30, 2016.
Mr. Michael?
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
Somebody notice John?
Yes.
Who is he and what's he do?
Uh, he's been a city resident, I do believe, for many years. I believe he lives on Byer Avenue.
No, I think he's at Fair Chance Construction.
Yeah, he's a good man.
Chief, you know, don't you?
Yeah, he's been a project manager for large projects for Fair Chance Construction for about the last 25 years.
Mr. Ray, you know him too, right?
Yes, I do. Very nice gentleman.
Good man.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Palumbo?
No.
Mr. Gehring?
Oh, I think he'll be a fine board member.
Mr. Michael?
You know, before I vote, Mr. Lee, you're good with all these votes. I mean, I know you and I just talked about it.
Yes, sir. The only question I have is the appointment date that they would be staggered at some point.
They are staggered.
Okay. The end dates are staggered?
That's why Mr. Denny was appointed as of July 1, 2012.
Okay.
And Mr. Meepres, 2013, and their reading term would expire staggered.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know each one of those members. We're blessed to have each one.
In other words, you would recommend him?
Highly, everyone.
What about you, chief? You recommend him highly, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
My vote is yes.
Mr. Jones? Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Ryan Reed and Taylor Mather on a part-time basis in functional recreation to fill the vacancy of Dante O'Connell at a rate of minimum wage to be effective immediately.
Joe, this is your appointment date.
Yeah, I... They're both good people. They'll be used sparingly, not even...
You and Eric do a great deal.
Why are we replacing two for one?
Because Dante's full-time. He's leaving. And these two are part-time.
Oh, my God.
No comment, Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No, nothing more than that.
Mr. Gehring?
I just wish Dante all the best, yes.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
Dante's done a great job, I'm saying.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Carol Craggitt as art and crafts director for functional recreation for two hours a day, three days a week, six hours weekly, at a rate of minimum wage to be effective immediately.
Michael?
Mr. Palumbo's...
Uh, she, a really nice lady, wants to do arts and crafts with all the kids at a point in time. And it's just something we put into our programs through the park to have arts and crafts and do many different things. She's very good at it. So, she's very good with the community. So, she's, you know, three days a week she's going to be at each different park.
Did we have somebody there before?
No, not the one. She was supposed to do it last year. Had some health concerns and couldn't do it. So, we didn't... It's only going to be for the month of July, I imagine.
Mr. Gehring?
Uh, no comment. Joe, you said she's going to rotate around different locations.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of a 2005 Chevy Silverado Model K 3500 dump truck with 9,250 miles when the sewage department had changed that on the original. I did have street department on the other sheet. For Penn State Auto Sales at a purchase price of $18,300. Three written clothes attached here, too.
I'm no comment.
Mr. Jones?
We're in Gary Needham equipment for the street department and the storage department with patching, patching, patching equipment. We looked at this piece of equipment and it's in A1 shape. And I suggested the council approve this.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
My question, just because the other ones had noted whether or not it was a gas or a diesel vehicle, do you know...
Gasoline, isn't it, Phil?
Yes.
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 Gasoline. It's a dump truck.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Pike?
Uh, I'm going to say... If you need to know why, I'm part of Penn State Auto.
You're what?
I am part of Penn State Auto.
Well, come on, you're getting a deal off of them.
There is a deal.
You can work me.
Are you the pen of the state?
Yeah, I don't know.
I get, the council, I have like five different quotes that I have from different dealers.
Oh, terrific, bye.
Yeah, there's a listing here. You have...
Eight hundred and twenty-six dollars a person.
And what they wanted for them.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that upon the recommendation of the Uniontown Planning Commission to approve the requested merger of properties situated on parcel 38120469 and parcel 38120470 in Baycott lot on Broad Street and by Tony and John Jackson.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
Uh, no comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that upon the recommendation of the Uniontown Planning Commission to approve the requested merger of parcel 38040465 and parcel 38040466 41 Lenning Street and 43 Lenning Street and by Louise and Russell Mettler.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that upon the recommendation of the Uniontown Planning Commission to approve the requested merger of parcel 38120409 and parcel 38120410 Six Wilton Avenue and Four Wilton Avenue owned by Louise and Russell Mettler.
No comment.
Jones? Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike? May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that upon the recommendation of the Uniontown Planning Commission to approve the requested merger of parcel number 38120466 and parcel number 38120467 26 South Broad Street and 30 South Broad Street and by Louise and Russell Mettler.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
I do have a question, just generically, because we'll probably be doing this a lot as well down the road with things. When we combine a lot, what happens to the taps? That were there? Because originally, you've got two taps, one for water and sewage. And now that we combine them, is there just going to be one tap? Because even from a developing standpoint with the sewage department, you know, there's been a restriction on development because of the number of taps that are out there?
You know it.
Well, we know it allows another tap.
Phil, do you know?
What is your question?
Taps.
I was... When they combine two properties, what happens to the taps on both of them? Do you combine as one?
If we combine two properties, we just combine one tap.
Gives us one more to go. It gives us an extra tap, then.
Yes.
Right.
Mr. Michael?
Thank you.
Mr. Dunn? Your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that upon the request of the Uniontown Planning Commission to approve the requested merger of parcel number 38130583 and parcel number 38040584 59 Park Avenue and Baycott lot on Park Avenue owned by Louise and Russell Mettler.
No comment.
Jones? No comment.
Palumbo?
No comment.
Gehring?
No, no comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yeah.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that upon the recommendation of the Uniontown Planning Commission to approve the requested merger of parcel number 38130631 and parcel 38130629 69 Butler Street and Baycott lot on Butler Street and by Louise and Russell Mettler.
No comment.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
No comment on this specifically, but since if we're reducing, then we should also get a reduction in our proration of the city's sewage bill with the two of our municipalities? Jason, can you ask Phil to step in?
So, when they do there in quarterly EDU town, once the biscuits reported and sent back down to the sewage office, I'm sure some point it'll be picked up.
Yeah, Eric, you can ask Phil.
Phil, what happens to these taps we're talking about? I buy the next door's piece of property. There's two taps here.
If we're tearing a house down, if we're tearing a house down, tap becomes vacated. And we're not... Our EDU count goes down as far as the operation of the sewage plant.
But if I keep them two houses on the property, the taps are still being paid for, correct?
They have to be paid for, yes.
Most of these lots, Phil, are already... That we're combining already have a vacant lot? So, is that tap already been reduced? Has our EDU count already been reduced? Or is this going to be...
Well, there's never a house. Was there a house on this lot you're talking about?
Originally, there would have been a house, but let's just say the house got torn down five years ago.
The EDU taps is gone. Tap's gone.
So, it got reduced in...
At our cost.
Years ago.
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure what I'm...
Yeah, we're doing a grade on all that. I think we tore down about 178 homes now to date. And those taps are gone, except the ones that were rebuilt, like on Maple Street. And we didn't charge a tap for those properties. We give existing taps. I think we tore down 15 homes down on Maple Street alone. And there was eight homes built right there, so...
Mr. Michael?
I'm going to... Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
May it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that upon the recommendation of the Uniontown Planning Commission to approve the request of lot consolidation for parcel 3060359 and 3506026702 54 Northmore and Mount Vernon Avenue and Salvation Army's brick store, and to approve the cycling pending thorough review of the plans by K2 Engineering.
Are they going to rebuild there or something?
Yeah, they're going to build a new store. Right, Dave? They're going to... Salvation Army's going to build a new store, right?
Yeah, they're going to tear down the two warehouses. They have our lumber. They're going to build a new store there. And then after the store's up, they're going to tear down the new store and create part in there.
My only comment would be, thank the planning commission for all the hard work on all of these. We really appreciate the time that you guys put in for this question. I think it's great. Salvation Army's going to stay in the city and build a new store?
How they turn down the existing one? After the new one's built, yes. Where they build it further back? It's going to be where the two warehouses are there now. They staked up, provides for the cycling and everything.
Who owns that property? Salvation Army?
They bought it, they had it, and I think...
I'm just glad to stay in the city. I'm glad to stay in the city.
He said it.
It was a lot of money.
It was a good story, I said, better stories.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palomba?
Yes.
Or Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to repeal ordinance number sixteen sixty-three adopted November seventh, two thousand twelve, thereby restoring the many provisions of the codified ordinances of the City of Uniontown, articles nine oh one, nine oh three, nine oh five, nine oh seven, nine oh nine, nine eleven, and nine twelve, codified ordinance number fourteen fifty-five, which shall henceforth remain in full force and effect.
What's that referring to? What's your ordinance referring to?
It's that ordinance that we passed back in November, at the request of K-two, they had that sidewalk ordinance.
The street excavation?
Street excavation required upon.
We haven't been able to collect any fees for the street cut because of the new ordinance.
Where they go?
Well, it was supposed to go for inspection of the cut, the hole.
In other words, the fees that the city got, they're not getting it?
They can, according to the new ordinance.
So we have to change it.
We have to change it.
I guess, yeah.
No comment.
Jones? Mr. Plumbow?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
Yeah, I think my questions have been answered. We were collecting money that we can't collect right now, so we're just going back, we thought we, unintended consequences going on here. So the new and improved version is the old version.
Right.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palomba?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to introduce bill number sixteen ninety-one, the passed ordinance number sixteen seventy-three, and ordinance amending ordinance number sixteen seventy enacted June fifth, two thousand thirteen, by the City of Uniontown to amend the definition of the term local traffic contained therein. Do you want me to read all of that to you? Can you please explain the ordinance?
This is on Mithlin Avenue, Goodwill's right there, and we put a great, great restriction on the road for Cool Spring for larger trucks, but then Goodwill had an issue with their local deliveries, so. I checked with Phil and Kim, and they got, you know, decided, I mean, it's right off, Goodwill's right there off of Mithlin, so we're gonna amend this so they can bring their trucks in and out without a problem.
They don't have another way to get in.
Yeah, there's none other way. Besides, it's local, I mean, you come right off the Council Street, right, into Goodwill's parking lot, right out the doors.
Yeah, really, the ordinance, as it was enacted, was a little too narrow, because it provided this very same exception, but it was limited to vehicles going to or from a farm or a residence. I mean, a commercial establishment should be in there too, so that's what we did, it's just amend the definition of local traffic, which is the exception to include coming from a commercial establishment rather than just a residence or a farm.
Mr. Jones? You remember the question?
Yeah.
Mr. Plumbow?
No comment.
Mr. Gehring?
My, my only question would be, what vehicles were using it prior that were potentially creating a problem in deterioration, why we needed to?
Coal trucks and spell trucks from the up in the mountain.
Not a problem.
Because of how Cool Spring on the Mithlin.
What they done working and done away with a, a bridge down there to come off one nineteen onto there, throwing the traffic up.
So we want to limit that, but at the same time, Goodwill has local deliveries of their product, so we need to support them.
Well, there's a couple other, whenever I saw this, there's a couple other local vendors on Cool Spring Street as well.
Well, yeah, but keep in mind though, this exception is only where these affected roads are the only means to get there and to leave. If there are other ways to get to where they're going, they're not within the exception. This is basically an easement by necessity that we're creating.
Well, there's a manufacturer on the road.
Yeah, well, if there's other ways to get there, then they can't be bringing trucks in and out of there.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palomba?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that accept the resignation of Charles David at the Union Town Sewing Department after July seventh, two thousand thirteen, and to compensate Mr. David, forty-eight eighteen days sick days at a rate of one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents per day, for a total of eight thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-six cents.
Chief, seems to be a lot of people who signed it since you took over.
Yes, Chuck, he's been with us for fifteen years, I want to thank him for his service to, not only the police department, but the citizens of Union Town, he has former military background as well, and Chuck moved on to the chapter in his life with the gas well industry, and we're willing to wish him the best.
I echo that.
I would agree, Chuck was a, an officer, and I agree with the mayor.
Mr. Jones?
I'm on the side.
Mr. Plumbow?
No comment.
And Mr. Gehring?
I just thank Mr. David for his service and wish him well.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palomba?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Yes.
It is all him there.
Fire chief?
Yes, Mayor, how you doing?
How are you?
Good. We're fine with the fire department. I do need to do a follow-up with Mr. Yonger on the roof at the East End Fire Station. The roof is on, completed, we still need to have them come back and put the flashing on, which is a discussion order, I guess we're still waiting on the flashing, but other than that, the roof doesn't leak anymore, the guys are happy up there.
What'd you do with all the buckets?
What's that, Mayor?
What'd you do with all the buckets? You had in your case in the water?
We kept them in case we need them in the future. That roof was on for over twenty years, and I appreciate Mayor and council for allotting that extra money to get that project done. And I truly like to thank council for all the support they've given the fire department over the last year. We continue to be professional, we'll continue to be professional in the future, and I want to thank all you guys for being supportive.
We're glad we got you, chief.
Thanks, Mayor.
Police chief?
Sir, the police department handled a call for service during the month of June. We, of course, as the citizens of Union Town are aware, we had a rash of armed robberies located within the city, which we ended up designating a lot of manpower and a lot of hours, and I want to thank the state police. We worked in conjunction with the state police and the Brownsville police and other local agencies to bring this guy, the suspect into custody, and we're hoping to, you know, move forward with all of those crimes that he committed. Being that it's the week of the Fourth of July, of course, the police department is dealing with an obscene amount of call volume regarding fireworks complaints, I just want to let the residents of Union Town know that fireworks are illegal within the city limits, it is illegal to set off fireworks. But also to the residents who call for police response when fireworks occur, that the call volume is very high, and we'll get there as quick as we can. We answered about thirty-seven fireworks calls on each Friday and Saturday night this past weekend, so we're dealing with them as best we can.
What about the guy from Gallant Avenue? You have anything you want to add? Is your neighborhood getting better?
It's getting a whole lot better.
That's good, that's what we want to hear.
I mean, really, it's getting, I mean, it's helping everybody too, it's looking, they're up there building now, building their first new house.
Yes, Mr. Mike?
We have this two thousand thirteen stories where a project area, everybody probably just try to pick one up, there's some, the VFW band starts it out, their Monday evening's five thirty to seven thirty, it's a great night out, it's free, there's restaurants there, local restaurants, I mean, there's some pretty good bands on here, so you should try to pick one up and put this in a favor, it's a great time, every Monday.
Mr. Jones?
I have no.
Plumbow?
Just want to say, David Park tonight has both basketball and baseball game going on, so, you know, it's a long time coming, but both sides of the park are being used under the lights, and it's a great thing to see, and if you get a chance, stop down.
Mr. Gehring?
Just want to keep thanking the chief for the service that he's doing and, and of course.
Thank you. Yeah, any public comment? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Larry Franny, one sixty-three Union Street. I have a complaint, and what I'm gonna say, none of it you're gonna like, including the chief. I lived up there forty-five years, and all I have in the last ten months is hell with five juveniles, they're running loose. The last three, four months, they knocked over my clamors, I don't, I fixed it up, screwed them down, so I wouldn't do anything. Thirty days, forty days ago, they wrote F-U, scratched it in my door on my pickup, I went down to the office and told a girl in the police station. Week and a half ago, they pulled the aluminum gutter off of my garage, I had to buy special clips to put it on. Last night, corridor eleven, right through kitchen window, that's on Anderson Window, clusses, eight hundred and fifty, it's gonna take me three weeks to get it. You raised the taxes and they all voted for it. He wants more police, you give him cover. Where are they when we need them, number one? Number two, I gotta now, I gotta, I got two long guns, I gotta go buy a pistol now, 'cause I'm not safe in my own house, my wife's not safe. That's a hell of a way to have to watch TV with a gun next to you. That's awful at best. To me, and you're not gonna like this, including him, I think he should be fatted, he doesn't have the answer. Thank you.
Anyone else want to make a comment?
I'm moving to the chair.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town, the council adjourns to meet on Wednesday, August seventh, two thousand thirteen, at one thirty P M. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palomba?
Yes.
Mr. Gehring?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?